We'll start with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could we have, let's see, welcome to our meeting tonight, City Council, May 4th, 2020. City Menominee, could we have roll call, please?
Luther.
Here.
Traxler.
Yeah.
Sutherland.
Here.
Sweeney.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Urban.
Oh.
Somerfeld.
Here.
Is that it? Hey, great. Hi Eric, I can see you now. Can you hear me everybody?
Yes, I had to right click the video, so we're good.
Okay, well, good, good to see you all and welcome to our meeting tonight. We're gonna see how this goes. This is our meeting through Zoom and so far, so good. So, no special recognitions this evening. With that, if somebody would like to approve the minutes. Okay Nate, with your hand up, if you could do a voice, please?
Yep, I would like to approve the minutes.
Okay, is there a second to that?
A second by motion.
Okay, seconded by Chad Schlue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, thank you. Need some of that. Okay, with that, no public hearings this evening. Under Public Comments is the place where somebody can comment for three minutes less on the agenda items for the evening.
And if I could just, just say Mr. Mayor, so for the public, if you do want to make a comment, you could, if you're on your computer, there's a symbol at the bottom on your participants, just raise your hand. You can turn on the cell phone, you can hit star nine. So if anybody in the public, we have three attendees would like to speak during public comments on something on the agenda, please raise your hand electronically, either by the symbol on the bottom of your screen or a star nine, and we'll bring you into the meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. ID. Under 5A, unfinished business. Proposed temporary trailer storage extension for Stepping Stones of Dunn County Incorporated, 1602 St. Road. The trailer was moved in there, we haven't had any complaints so far. Really, I don't even see it, it's pretty hidden back there. So, a motion to extend the, the trailer storage would be in order. Okay, Lee Schwabs, could you give us a voice, please?
Yep, I make a motion to extend an additional 90 days at Stepping Stones for the trailer.
Thank you, Lee, is there a second to that motion? Ryland, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
I'll make a second to the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Real quick, if I, if I may, is, are we, so we're making a motion to extend the 90 day, like temporary storage, or are we just extending it indefinitely?
No, this is a temporary for 90 days and then we can bring it back and do an ordinance change if we want. I think, Lowell, do you have something to add to that? Okay, so what, we can bring it back in 90 days and, and make it a permanent fixture or change the ordinance. We're just kind of seeing how it goes and if there's any complaints, but so far it's, it's good. So, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, thank you. Under 5B, proposed resolution extending Parkhead pilot program through October 31st, 2020. We had three locations possible, the only one that took advantage of it was Duke and Dager. But with that, Lowell, you want to touch on that just real quick?
I did reach out to the Duke and Dager and they were considering whether or not they were going to put their pilot out this year. But in talking to Andrew Murso, one of the owners of that facility, he was going to check with us in the Main Street and maybe he thought it would be a good idea if we extended the program just because of the situation, maybe some other people later this summer would like to take advantage of something like that with the outdoor seating. The initial reservation did allow, I think, up to three entities on the Main Street, in the, I think, Main Street District to access this program. So I guess we're recommending we extend it again this year, see that anybody does take advantage of it and consider it again in 2021, but we'd not be allowed to do it permanently.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brangie. So if he has any questions or if somebody would like to make a motion to do so. Okay, Ryland, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, thank you. Mary, you've got your hand up?
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion been made by Ryland Erdman and seconded by Mary Solberg. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, thank you. Moves us down to 6A, proposed tid number 12, sale of lot 6CSM 1994 and part of Lot 1, CSM 1269, and developer's agreement to ELH Holdings LLC. Discussion and possible motion approving. Mr. ID has brought the map up on the screen, I'll turn it over to he and Lowell and Charlie.
So just a little orientation of where this lot is at. It is on the, in the North Industrial Park. The interstate's running east-west, pull the screen. Lot 6 is right, sorry, right, right where my cursor is. And I'll bring up, let me bring up the actual CSM, if I can find that. And then just a little closer look at it is yellow in the green area, the acreage and the agreements for a 40,000 square foot facility. And Lowell's probably going to go with details.
Correct, it's ELH Holdings, they've had an option on this property since 2014. So that 6 acreage parcel is directly west of the Brown Strauss site, that's hopefully going to start later this summer. And where the railroad spur is going to go in, so right to the right of that yellow area is where Brown Strauss is going to go. Part of tid number 12 is one of the last acreages we have out there against the drop since 2014. They've paid $1,000 a year for the first five years. Last year, we removed that option through the end of this year for $5,000. One more go around, so they have given us $10,000 towards the property, which they are not asking to be returned. They are asking though, instead of a tid incentive, that we would give them the land in exchange for the facility. Again, they've guaranteed a 40,000 square foot building by the end of the year. If there was a kind of a buyback clause in there or payback clause, if they would get the building up, ultimately the building would go at 70,000 square feet. So Randy pulled up the preliminary site plan, it shows the building, 40,000 square feet on the greater east side of the property. Again, two more 15,000 square foot additions can go on the west side. Wrong number in value, Charlie can help me here for probably around a million dollars on the building, which is 25,000, $30,000 in value, which annually, and again, that would go directly into tid 12, which we're using as a building in the district. Use tid 13 and possibly another tid down the road. So with that, I can answer questions. Pretty straightforward situation, again, it was kind of fill in a hole, it's in the industrial park that's been vacant for, going on 20 years, I guess.
Yes, and Lowell's right, it's a good full insight, and the value is at least a million, if not a million, too.
Any questions for staff? Does anybody want to make a motion to start the process?
I'll make the motion to start the process.
Okay, so the motion that Eric Sutherland, I believe, is making is the, to approve the developer's agreement to ELH Holdings on the lot 6CSM 1994 and part of Lot 1, CSM 1269, is that correct, Eric?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for the motion, is there a second to that motion? Mary, you've got your hand up?
Yes, I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Now discussion, anybody have any discussion? If not, we'll take a roll call vote.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney. Yes.
Schwabs. Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Urban.
Yes.
Somerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Clarification, do we need a roll call for the next piece of business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and that brings us down to 6B, proposed agreement with Door Drill and Skala C for a two-year prosecution services contract. That's Allison is our city prosecutor, I think she's done a great job for us. This is the firm she works with. So if anybody's in agreement with that, we could take a motion at this time. Okay, Robin, you've got your hand up?
I want to make a motion to accept this proposed agreement with Door Drill and Skala, with Allison as our prosecutor attorney.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion? Okay Jeff, go ahead Jeff.
I'll second Robin's motion to extend, giving, approving a two-year extension.
Okay, thank you, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sweeney.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Urban.
Yes.
Somerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yeah.
Traxler.
Yeah.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to 6C, proposed 651, ordinance amendment eliminating through highway status at Elm Avenue and Wilson's and Street and 9th Street East and 14th Avenue East. So that was the Elm Avenue, Wilson and North Menominee and the 9th Street, 14th Avenue here in South Menominee, there's a map up, Mr. ID?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is the same intersection we shared with the council last meeting. What you have before you is an ordinance that, that codifies the installation of these stop signs. First one we have up on the screen is Elm Avenue and Wilson Street. This would turn it in from a two-way, two-stop sign intersection to a four-way stop. We would stop, right now, Wilson Street stops, we would add stop signs to stop Elm Avenue, which goes east and west. That would create a four-way stop, and the second one, intersection, is moving to the south side of the city near Dix, at 9th Street and 14th Avenue. That's 19, 9th Street and 14th Avenue. At this intersection right now, 14th Avenue running east and west stops, but 9th Street does not. This would create a four-way stop, they're stopping 9th Street at the same intersection. This again would, would put it into code, the stop signs would be there, or for us to put the stop signs up, it will take a while before we actually, actually put the stop signs up, and we would do that very deliberately, making sure we have plagues and enough advanced warning, we'd work with the police department, so we don't surprise people, but this would be the first step if the council approves the ordinance that Ben, Ben has provided.
Okay, thank you, Mr. ID. For, and, and as far as processes go, somebody would have to introduce the ordinance, and then we'll take it through the readings. So if anybody would like to introduce this ordinance, we could do that at this time. Okay, Nate, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I would like to approve the proposed ordinance.
Okay, as far as introducing it, so I will take that as an introduction.
Yeah.
Correct Nate, okay, so we'll have Nate as a introduction to the ordinance, and now we need a motion to waive the first reading. Mary?
Make that motion.
Okay, and Ryland?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor of waiving the first reading, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and then we'll need a motion to waive the second reading. Mary, you've got your hand up?
Oh, yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion to waive the second reading? Okay, Nate with a second to waive the first, second reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and now we'll need a motion to adopt. Is there somebody would like to make the motion to adopt said ordinance? Okay, Robin Sweeney with a motion to adopt, is there a second to that motion? Oh, can you say something, Robin?
Sure.
I'm
I make the motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion? Mary Solberg with a second?
I would second that, yes.
Good, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, okay, thank you. Okay, moving down to 6D. The review of Main Street sidewalk replacement bids, discussion and possible motion of award. I'll turn that over to Charlie Jones.
We, open bids, this is for replacement of some of the downtown sidewalks, it's on two blocks in the northern half of Main Street between 2nd and 4th Street, but in front of the Mabel, the post office, the Silver Dollar block.
They have it on the screen.
You have it on, there you go. Randy has it already up on the screen.
I'll just, Ryland, we had, we had five bids.
Thanks, I was looking for that.
We, this was, this was in our capital improvement plan, we had about $70,000 set aside, do some sidewalk repair in Main Street a year and a half ago. We received five bids, the bids ranged in price from $56,480 to $97,301. The estimate was right around $70,000. We're recommending award of a little bit to Skidsteer Guy LLC at $56,480 pending proof of bonding and insurance. And, and, and I, and I, if you do approve this, maybe some room for us to do a little bit more sidewalk repair on a couple intersections, but I, maybe we'll talk about that if, if you do award this to Skidsteer Guy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones, Mr. ID, any questions? Yes, Lee?
Yeah, it's just going to go in, it's the same type of sidewalk, and if it is, what we're going to do to keep it from happening again, know that deterioration.
Okay, I'm gonna let the experts answer that one.
We're proposing to put the same configuration that we have in front of the cobblestone in front of the tremble dentist. So we're getting rid of the stamped concrete, we're still going to have some colored concrete. I think it hasn't held up well to a lot of salt. We're going to try to cure it and to protect it a little bit more. The area in front of both trembles and actually we've got it in front of the Menominee Market and, and cobblestone. Those have all been holding up better than the stamp. So we're, you know, we're, other than sealing it more regularly, you know, we have past week, you know, that salt will attack concrete, so we're going to have to try to protect it. And that area, because it's heavily used for commercial, gets a lot of salt, especially in front of the post office.
Lee, go ahead.
When you say better, what kind of life are we going to expect compared to what we just had? Better doesn't sound perfect.
Unfortunately, unless we tell them there is no salt, we don't have perfect. I think if we would seal it, I, yeah, if we seal it probably every five years, that, Lee, you know, concrete should go 25, 30 years. And so that's what the life, if you ask me, that's what I'm saying, I expect. The, the stamp, you know, the bricklayers we put in held up decent, the, when we replaced it with the stamped colored concrete. I, you know, we, the, just the stamping had left an uneven surface, and I think that collected the salt or let the salt settle in it more. The, you know, the joints that we put in there, that's where we really got to, you know, try to seal it and do a better job because the salt attacked the, the concrete joints. And you gotta have the joints, if you don't, they're going to, it's going to crack anyway, you're going to have a break there. So I, I mean, there, it's a concrete material, it, it's non-flexible, it, it will crack, we hopefully crack it at joints, but we have to do a better job of track, protect the joints from the salt.
Good question, Mary, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. Um, you know, Skidster guys, I, I think we've used them before, haven't we?
Yep, Mary, he's, he's done a lot of work around town, he's, he's done his work for Stowe, he's down in Melton, Melton, the door area, but.
Okay, I guess, you know, I, you know, you see him with a much lower bid than, than the other three bid offers and, you know, I just, I guess I want to make sure that I, we're getting somebody that knows what they're doing, that they'll do a good job and that we won't regret taking the cheapest.
Basically, because one was lower than the others, two of the other bids, you know, the, the two other low bids and the, the other bids were closer to our estimate. We have worked with this contractor before, we think he is very qualified. He's actually fairly easy to work with, if a contractor is ever easy to work with. And so we are recommending, we believe he has the capability and the capacity to do the work.
And Mary, if I could, if I may add, he did, recently did the intersection of Broadway and 6 in front of that parking lot. He redid the concrete there and redid, repaved that intersection.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ryland?
Just wondering, who did the work on the sidewalk that's there currently and when was that done?
The sidewalk in front of the Silver Dollar was done in 1996. Uh, to best my recollection, and that was done, it was a DOT contractor. I'm drawing blank, right? They're a large highway contractor that came in and did that work. The area in front of the post office has been replaced twice, I believe, and I, Randy, you know, I don't know who did those.
I don't recall who did the, the post office either, but that was done a little more recently, and that red concrete just busted up on us, I don't know, bad mix. You'd think it would be easy to put concrete in and we'd have it all figured out by now, but that one just blew up around the post office.
And again, I think the post office is one area where they're, they salt all the time, and again, if we could, again, there's a fine line there, they want it safe for, for people to come in in the winter. But if we could, you know, somehow shovel more and wind it to salt less, and, and again, I do think if we're more aggressive in, in sealing it, you know, it, it gets a seal when it first pour, but to be honest with you, for most of our sidewalks in the 40 years I've been here, we don't go back and reseal it. I think in those areas, we're going to have to have a program where we go back and reseal.
Okay, any other questions? Now, we have a motion and a second. No motion, okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the bid? Ryland Erdman with a motion to, go ahead Ryland.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid with Skidsteer Guy for $56,480.
Okay, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Contingent bond.
Oh, contingent on bonding Ryland?
Contingent on bonding and insurance and whatever other requirements we have.
Okay, that sounds like a good motion, is there a second to Ryland's motion? Oh, Robin's got her hand up, go ahead Robin.
I second Ryland's motion.
Okay, any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Merrill.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
No.
Is that a no?
That was a no.
Okay.
Urban.
Yes.
Somerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Traxler.
Yeah.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Sweeney.
Yes.
And for the councils, if we do have some extra money, what we're thinking of doing is, is we're working on both intersections at Third and Main here. We may repair the corners on the south side of Main and Third, so we have all four corners repaired in this intersection. If there's extra money with the sidewalk, that's, that's kind of what we're looking. We've had a lot of complaints from the bricks here, this is the anxious jewelers here, antique store on the side, and we've had a lot of breaks, complaints on those intersections, so if there is extra money, that's, we'll probably go after recording with downtown Menominee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. ID. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to keep going. Under 6E, appointments to various boards and commissions including, appointments to various boards and commissions, including the Board of Review, Recreation Advisory, Tourism Commission, Historic Preservation and Board of Zoning Appeals. That list includes on the Board of Review, Vince Haig, John Saboda. Under the Recreation Advisory, John Rizler, Jody Pavage, Kale Prox, Rory Frederson, Federson. Under Tourism Commission, Grady Richards, Keelal Revel, Nick Riddelosi. Under the Historic Preservation, Carl Rudenberg. Under Board of Zoning Appeals, Steve Lindberg and Bob Schultz. And that sums it up for that, so if anybody would like to make a motion to accept.
This is Lowell's for the council's information, all reappointments to those positions.
Okay, correct. So those are just reappointments, if anybody would like to make a motion, now would be a good time to do so. Yes Ryland, you've got your hand up?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve those appointments.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion? Okay Chad Schlue with a second, go ahead Chad.
I second that also.
Thank you Chad. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, okay, thank you. Okay, under 6F, no budget transfers I know of, no, okay, we can keep on going. Under the mayor's report, just a quick, a couple little things. The Dave Howe Memorial Fan Deck is being constructed right now by Market Johnson, they just got started. The Public Works Facility has been started and that seems to be going well, along with the wastewater treatment. And then also Ellsworth Creamery is still, they're still working on some final site plans, but that's coming, and the Brown Strauss, they're still working on, coming too, so that's all good. I do have one other thing tonight, and that is called the Mayor's Proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week. Callie insisted that I read the whole thing verbatim.
That is a lie.
But I will say this, I'll take one of the seven, whereas, whereas the 1854 professional municipal clerks and 72 county clerks contribute to election administration by attending required training and dedicating themselves to providing fair, non-biased, nonpartisan, accurate and responsible elections in Wisconsin, and whereas, 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 and whereas. I, Mayor Menominee now, therefore I Randy Connect, Mayor of Menominee, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim May 3rd through May 9th, 2020 as Professional Municipal Clerks Appreciation Week. So now you can thank Callie for me having to read this tonight, so there you go.
Way to go, Callie.
See, you got one good, you got one fan out there.
Oh, me too.
Oh, two, okay. Any communications from, first of all, council, and then we'll turn it over to staff? Okay, staff, Lowell?
Just that I did put a listing of the appointments for upcoming year 2020 in the packet, so you can keep those for your reference. I think everybody's been notified that everybody pretty much re-upped to the same position, so you can expect the agenda's in the mail from those folks. And then I put a pretty picture in there, the wastewater treatment is getting their new tractor truck down the road, Randy may want to explain a little more what that's all about. I can tell you it costs a lot. Well, thank you very much, council, for the tractor truck, it's going to go to, it'll be pretty good use, that's a workhorse for them down there. It'll be used, so thank you much.
The only other thing that we would add is, you know, continue to be safe, I know I continue to get phone calls from folks that are concerned about not being open and, and at the same time, I get concerns about people that we don't want to open too soon, so I realize it's some hardships out there and please patronize those that you can, and we'll try to get through this together. With that, if we can move on to claims, if you make a motion to pay the bills. A revised claims list, Mary?
I would make a motion to pay the bills of the revised claims list.
Okay, thank you, Mary Solberg, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Mary Solberg. Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Robin Sweeney?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Robin Sweeney.
I second Mary's motion to pay the bills.
Okay, sometime there's a delay, so if we don't catch it right away, sorry, Eric. Okay, Mary had the motion, had the second. And roll call vote, please?
Just, just one thing, Mr. Mayor, if you noted on the list, council, that we have been separating out the COVID-19 expenses. We're keeping track of those, because there may be some reimbursement methods down the road that we can recover some of those costs. We're also internally keeping track of hours that are COVID-related, et cetera. So while you're seeing these on the list, we're doing that so you're aware of them. And also that there may be, there's a tracking mechanism going on.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Prang. That was, that was a good word. Anybody else? Mary, you've got your hand up? Okay. Okay, so where are we at? Okay, we need a roll call vote, please. Thank you.
Merrill?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Urban?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Traxler?
Yeah.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to licenses. Anybody like to make a motion to the revised license list? Now would be a time to do so. Okay, Robin, you got your hand up?
I'll make a motion to accept or to award the new license list.
Okay, thank you. Eric, you get your hands up? Well, anybody else?
I do now.
Okay, hi, Eric.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Robin Sweeney to accept the licenses and seconded by Eric Sutherland. Any questions? No? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, thank you. We do not have any closed session tonight. Anything else from staff? Anything else from council?
Okay, that's Randy. It's Jeff.
Hi, Jeff.
I was waiting after everybody signs off. If Randy, Idi and Lowell and you could stay on for a little bit, I got a question for you. It doesn't pertain to our meeting tonight or anything. It's just something in the neighborhood here.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. The other thing is too, did we want to schedule a did you have a tourism meeting scheduled or a parking utility scheduled? Okay.
I think next Tuesday, Mary, we're going to be looking at a parking tilting meeting at 10:00 in the morning.
Okay. I'm not very busy, so that should be fine.
Same, same format as this.
Yeah, we'll be trying to do a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, motion to adjourn? Okay, I got, everybody's got their hand up. Jeff Luther, you got a motion to adjourn? Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Ryland Erdman with a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, everybody, have a good night. Jeff, we'll keep you on for a minute.
Hey.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye, Nate.